My presentation went well, had a lot of good feedback in that, so that was great. Like even stranger, so it wasn't like people I knew made nice.
Well, that's good.
It was very busy, I mean they keep you busy, like run like seven in the morning until like seven at night.
Yeah.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome into the Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, City Council Meeting, Roll Call. We have two councilors, they're absent this evening and excused, councillor here and councillor gone. Anybody have any questions with that? If they need to see the emails that were sent, we can provide them. Indication, inspirational thought, we don't have anybody this evening, but I will read the council prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern, help this government body in every situation to know and to do things that are right and just with soundness of judgment and making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. And if everybody would please join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Allegiance, item number four, public forum. I don't believe you have anything, I'll ask Danielle. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to? Oh, that's easy. Four. Bid openings, awards, and appointments. I believe we have a Nylander board resignation and...
Who's the appointment?
Do you want to handle this? Do you have this up here?
Yep, I know this was an email that was received, and Phil McDonough has regretfully resigned from the Nylander board, and so I just wanted you to accept his resignation. You have received one application for the board spot, but if you wanted to put it out to see if you get some other applications, I mean it's whatever you want to do from there, but we should at least accept Mr. McDonough's resignation.
I'd make a motion to accept Mr. Dunn's, Mr. Dunne's, you get it.
Yeah.
Resignation.
Second.
Discussion. Boma.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Terrio.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, accept the resignation and move the council. We don't have to, we don't have to move forward with the acceptance immediately.
Well, I'm just looking for direction, like do you want me to put something on the website that you're, that you're taking applications and you can keep this one and come back at another meeting, or what's?
How do we normally handle a vacancy on a board? We should follow whatever protocol that we've done in the past.
Well, it's just that you have to appoint one, like I looked at their chapter and there wasn't a time limit for that.
I mean advertising for that to the public.
I think you usually, you usually will advertise at least on the website to let people know that you have a vacancy.
I think we can leave this alone, probably do a diligence here.
Yeah.
Advertise it, put somewhere up there, Facebook, website.
Yep, will do.
That's number five, public hearings possible. Action items, we do not have anything on number six. Reports by staff and committees, the mayor's report, one of my favorite parts of the meeting. Penny, all yours.
Okay, so Riverfront Power Plant, no new updates, the Brownfields grants will open in December, so we are trying to get a head start by getting the project shovel ready, and the DEP is helping with that. We had another break-in, I took a call from the police department this morning, and Public Works went down to secure the building again. We seem to, we just keep going through this all the time.
Excuse me, is, is it ours still, or has it?
It's still ours, yeah.
What's the time, well, okay, another discussion.
The broadband initiative, all documents have been executed with CEGC and BIG, and work on the study is now underway. I just got an email today that another pot of money for broadband is coming to Maine also, and so these are things that we really, one of the things when I went to my conference in Chicago was about focusing your efforts on things that make money, like that's, that was a, was something that was said in a lot of different sessions I went to, and I think right now we have to devote a lot of time to these grants because there's so many of them out there, and that's what's going to be bringing money into care, but, and the broadband thing is big, and if we're going to get our share, it's something we really have to concentrate on. Events and marketing, the Caribou Marathon Weekend is September 18th and 19th, and if you're available to volunteer, please let Christina King Gibson know. The final Thursdays on Sweden Street was a big success, and it was great to meet the leadership team from Savilinks. They were set up and they had a reception, and Christina and Gary and I all went, and they complimented the workforce in Cariboo several times, and as I talked to individual people, that was one of the things that each of them shared with me was, in Cariboo, this was kind of a trial run when they started this last year, just to see how it would go, but the workforce was so impressive to them that they felt comfortable bringing different contracts up here and kind of expanding, and that was really great to hear, that they were happy with the quality of the workers that they had here in Cariboo, it was very encouraging. Under Land Bank, 30 North Street will be the first project for the land bank. Chapter 13 rewrite, the planning board is still working to prioritize changes to that. The Federal American Rescue Plan Act, I was not able to complete the registration because Mr. Marker is still in their records, that's something we're going through with the housing agency also, so we're just working on that. Things are very slow to change on the federal level, you know, when you have names in there, but I'm still working on that. Light cleanup, many demo permits have been issued recently, and that's always very encouraging. The Birdseye Cleanup, this is another project that we're trying to have ready for the Brownfields grant application when it opens in December, and Haley Ward is working with us on that. Not a lot of updates. Riverfront, the master plan, their group met on August 18th and discussed and reviewed projects, that's coming, we've got a public hearing on that next, next meeting. The Nylander, of course, we had our incident with the failed sprinkler system, and our finance director, Carl Grant, has been working with the insurance company for damage. Public Works Director Dave Valet has been working on keeping the building secure, getting it dried out, there's been a crew in there tearing down the ceilings, that, all of that got wet, and Dave and I had a long talk about it today, but we'll soon be to the place where we can start getting bids to get that work cleaned up in there. The trailer park, we're noticing progress down there with some of the mobile homes being moved out. The airport, I'm working on our state of the airport report for future meetings, and the five-year RFQ for engineering services is on tonight's agenda. The City Hall boiler system, Dead River is going to be coming to do the work starting tomorrow, so they'll be here tomorrow through Friday, working on that work that was put out for bid. For the river road on the 24th, which was after our last meeting, there were representatives from the whole alphabet of government agencies, MEMA, Aristide County Emergency Management, the city, Councilor Terrio and her husband, where they're also as longtime residents of the road, and could really provide some context for different events that's happened on the river road through the years, and they seem to be encouraged that we, that this would be a project the FEMA could help with, so we're, I've sent them all of the recent documents from Dubois and King, so they're working from the most recent incarnations of all those drawings, and, you know, they thanked me for that, they acknowledged receiving those, so I'm hoping to hear more about that.
Penny, excuse me, have you heard, has Dave heard anything? Remember he asked about if he could go ahead and do a temporary alignment, and they were gonna, you haven't heard anything?
No, we haven't heard back from him on that either. So for COVID-19, Aristide County is still listed as a high level of community transmission on the CDC website, so we're taking what precautions we can at this point, master just recommended, not required, so that's what we're going with here. Does anyone have any questions about any of that?
Any questions for Penny or from the public, manager's report? Thank you very much, Penny. So now we have seven, RFQ for municipal airport general consultant slash airport engineer.
So the Caribou Municipal Airport, well, all airports have these five-year agreements with engineers. Ours expired in 2020, and we, at that time, should have gone out for bid, but for some reason that wasn't, that didn't happen. We need to have someone listed as our engineer, so that when we put projects out to bid, we have someone that, you know, can help us with those things. This, I had put this on the agenda last week, and then I had received information that maybe what I had wasn't correct, but I double-checked with STANTEC, there's no annual fee from them to be our airport engineer, or whoever you hire, this is, what's going out is a request for qualifications, there's no money tied to this, this is so that we have somebody kind of on the ready if we need to have any work done, and STANTEC has confirmed there's no annual fee associated with this agreement. When work is required, the city and STANTEC work out an arrangement for the services provided in writing at that time. And what I used was the sample from 2015, which was the last time this was put out for bid, and then I just updated it with the dates, updated it with some information that has changed at the airport, because we now have the other hangar, which we didn't have before, so that is in our narrative about the airport, and the projects that are listed, again, these things may or may not be funded through federal funds, and I have in the chart where the money would come from, of course, with the local share, we can use like in-kind, if Dave does work up there with his crew. And so the, this is like a sample of some of the things that maybe, that we hope over the next 10 years might get done at the airport, including the apron reconstructions, snow removal equipment, the fuel farm, this will be in my state of the airport report, but the FAA is no longer paying for fuel farm improvements. What we talked about with STANTEC when they were here for our meetings that we had with the FAA, they said if we did it as part of the apron reconstruction program, because the, you know, they're going to be ripping up everything anyway, and replace the tank then, then it's going to be a lot less expensive to do it then, to put in the new tank, so that was one of the things that we talked about when they were here. So what I'm just, I just wanted to, I guess, have a motion that we can put out this RFQ, we would be bringing it back for, you know, if we, within the time limits here, what we get for interested parties. Does anybody have any questions that I may or may not be able to answer about the airport? I'm learning a lot about the airport, for sure. It's really, I will say though, it is, it's really fascinating, and the event that we had up there with the World War II plane was really a lot of fun, and even if you just go up there, like I go up there just to see what's going on sometimes, just make sure the bathrooms are clean, there's not trash, and the doors are locked, there, the people that have planes up there are so excited, they're so enthused, it does seem to get a lot of use. We seem to have people call every day with airport questions, you know, today someone called to see if they could get a charter flight to New Hampshire, said, you know, the city doesn't offer charter flights to New Hampshire, but, you know, put it on Facebook, maybe somebody who is a pilot will take you there, but, it's just very, it's just interesting, everything about the airport's very interesting.
Which is the council on this?
Our move that we go ahead and put out the RFQ.
RFQ.
RFQ, and see where it goes. Second.
Second discussion. Boma.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Terrio.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, so now we've got 8A is introduction of ordinance number 18, 2021, amending chapter 17, general assistance, and Danielle and Penny.
Danielle, do you want to talk about that at all?
It's pretty straightforward.
It's the same thing we do every year, to amend the maximums of the state file.
And I think a long time, I asked this question quite a few years ago now, that we can't do anything about it.
Nope.
It's just formality.
It's just formality, I mean that's...
You can make the numbers bigger.
We don't need to, so that's, I remember asking that question, so that's my...
So moved.
Yes, yes.
So that's just an introduction?
I take that back. I take that so moved off the table.
So it's introduction by councillor Morale, annual scheduled public hearing on this. Next, whatever's convenient.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, because you have a timeframe to this thing.
It has to be done by October 1st, and they just have it on Friday.
Will we be able to get it in the paper, I mean? Okay, so Danielle's going to work magic, and we're just not going to ask for this.
Paper for you?
Yeah.
No, I know.
She's going to work magic, and we don't need to know that, we don't need to know how the sausage is made.
So we got, okay, so 8B is motion to set election November terms and warden appointments, Danielle and Penny.
So you have a memo in your packet, and I have it on the screen here, also from Danielle, and she's here if you have any questions, setting an 8:00 AM opening time for the November 2nd election, an appointment of Danielle Brissette as the election warden, Sherry Garman and Lisa LeBarre as deputy wardens for the November 2nd election.
So moved.
Second.
Second discussion. Boma.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Terrio.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Aye. Motion. So we got old business, we don't have any here. I got reports and discussion by mayor and council members, I want to briefly, I'm going to go with this, I want to briefly discuss the public safety committee. Right, there was, at the last meeting, there were some motions that were brought up. About four or five years, was it four or five years ago, we started talking about public safety building, and it's moved forward. It was kind of at a stalemate for a year, year and a half maybe, so shortly after becoming mayor, I made a public safety committee, they followed up with, with some of these things. Recently, at the last meeting, we were given, I was not able to attend, unfortunately, a presentation by artifacts, and they came up with a number, and this was, there was a couple of motions made, and there were some questions regarding whether this item is dead or not. I don't consider this being dead, and you have some emails here that, some clarifications that I did some, or had, excuse me, had Penny do some research on through MMA and with Rick Solomon to clarify, there was a lot of questions involved, we weren't able to get this onto the September, well, September 3rd was the deadline, excuse me, to get onto the November referendum. I think we were very tight on that timeframe, as far as the week, we get a number the week before, and I considered, and I polled the council, and there were some mixed reviews, but that's fine, of having a special meeting to get this onto the referendum, and that's what brings up some of these questions that, and it didn't work anyway, so the timeframe was, was there, so we didn't make it on there, so basically this defines what a session is, and I'd like to thank a citizen for bringing me by this. It's got dropped by my house.
Fun reading that.
That's what I said too, but I've got it for reference, so thank you for bringing that by, so there were some questions, Robert's rules of order. So moving forward, I just tell the public, in the future, very soon, we are going to get together as a council, get a little more united on this, as far as what our direction is on this, I'm comfortable that we can possibly have something on a, maybe on a June referendum down the road, so. down the road, so just, I guess that's all I'm going to go. If anybody has any questions about this, please send, you've sent this email to everybody. This is just, I looked in, and there was some, there was some confusion, so I didn't push forward with having a special meeting.
And I haven't heard back from, um, Rick. Again, the last thing was just about a session, like, trying to get a definition of that.
So there's just some things, and I think this is not just in this situation here, that is learning for all of us. So it, it kind of enlightens us. I've, uh, like I said earlier, I've also spoke with Courtney, who's the chair of the safety committee, and, uh, hopefully you can have a meeting before the next meeting with some, uh, bring us up to speed on that. Primarily, I'd like to look at some, we have some ideas there, but maybe some funding options, you know, what's, what's available. That's where we're moving forward with this, so I just, it's not dead. It's, we're just moving forward with it. So that's all I have to say about that. I, does anybody else have anything they want to talk about, the public safety committee or police station? So that's what I've got. So you're going to, you know, meeting us together. Okay. Uh, while I'm on this, the next one I want to talk about is, um, can you please, I believe by September 15th is when you'll have to have us, the preliminary budget numbers.
Yep, yep, and I, um, I got the, the August financials from the finance director, so I'm working on that.
Okay. Did you reach out to Councilor Gawn? And I'd like to have him schedule a capital improvement committee meeting as, sometime this month. I think that's probably a very important thing as far as, as we get into this budget season, and you can, or at least get him some numbers and then...
Do you want that before or after the 15th? Like, after, like, after you have that report in hand, or...
Uh, let's see, see, this isn't quite a timeframe to get, after, let's get to 2:00 in the afternoon, after, and then get that to him and let him look it over.
Yep.
Who's on, who else is on that one? Capital improvement? You?
We can look on the website.
I'm not, I don't.
Whatever, I just, I'm just thinking forward here before the budget season, and there's a lot of things that we need to talk about, so I can agree with that, so. All right, if you can reach out to him on that, um, reach out, please reach out to Tom and get a charter committee meeting, scheduled regarding the latest ordinance.
Okay, capital budget chair is Councilor Gawn, member, Councilor Boma, and Councilor Morale.
Okay, so if you could, after you get that report out, you know, please get a hold of Councilor Gawn, sooner than later.
So, and then you said charter committee?
Yeah, talk to Tom. We, we're going to, we need to schedule a public hearing for the, that was, um, for an ordinance that was introduced recently. We've gotten back some legal advice on that, so I'd like to, I'd like to get that bounced around before we get a public hearing, so if you could talk to Tom about that, and I believe you're going to schedule some, talk about the ambulance, so you're going to get something going on, uh, the, uh, schedule meeting. So, I'll let you, I'll let you speak on that behalf, so that when I spoke with you earlier here...
Right, I got to have Penny, if you would, the information that our previous manager had, that his documentation that solidified his opinion on behalf of the city that transfers were tickety-boo, could you round that up and send it to me? And I'll send it out to the committee.
And you'll, you'll get a, you'll get...
I'll set the, I'll set that.
Set that up, so that's what we talked about, some going through, some charter, ambulance couple, spoke about the, um, trailer park, so that's, we can hold off on that, I guess, until maybe until October, uh, I can cover, and I think that, that capital improvement one, please.
So do you want me to send that out to your committee, like, everyone on your committee?
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Or the whole council, or...
However you want to do it, it's fine with me. It's all open and...
You're the chief of the committee.
Ooh, that's a big word. Send it out, send it out to the committee, and if somebody wants it, we gladly pass it on to them.
We're going to work on those, we're going to work on, and this is very, I think this is very important because we're coming up on, prior to the budget season, so these are, these are a lot of questions that can be answered. What else do I have to talk about? More discussion by mayor and council members, uh... That's what I've got, so I'll start down here. Do you have anything you'd like to...
I do not. Nope.
John, do you have any updates for us?
No updates.
Do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Nope. I'm good.
Okay, perfect. Anybody? Okay, that makes it easy, so I think we're all, Penny has some direction on this, so we have no executive section. So let's see, what's that mean?
That means you're right.
At least 10 o'clock.
No, no, 6:30. We're two minutes early.
6:30, now we can talk here for, we can get two, three more minutes, so we can talk about something.
This would be the record, and I, we'd have to go on record as the, well, one of the shortest regular meetings.
We can talk about this for a little bit. I agree with the citizen, and I won't say who it was, and I will use it as a reference.
You, you need to get, go on Amazon and get the condensed... Yeah, I got...
Yeah, I don't know, this, this one says it was the...
And they even have a sheet.
It's newly revised.
Yeah, I've got one that I got from Amazon. It's electronic, and it's the new, brand-new one.
It's the brand-new one, so, uh, okay. And, well, uh, oh, I'll give it a couple more minutes here, so, uh, we have seven people running for council.
Could you send me the list?
Yeah, and if you could update, send that to everybody, and then, uh, there's a lot of people interested in this, it's, it's good that we have people that are...
Seven running for council, we have three running for school board, and one for the hospital board.
Excellent, so, and I have one here, and I'll get that back to you, so we're going to, you're going, now, we're going to wax Christine, so you're going to get the candidate for him and all that good stuff again.
For sure.
Perfect, so keep us updated on it. It's still early, and our ballots have gone out, so, are they printed? They're gone?
Yeah, waiting on the board.
Just waiting on the board.
And to find out exactly how well they've paid for last week.
Right, because there's so many charter amendments.
Yeah, we got, we got, we got two or three, about four charter thing? Five charter?
So I think it's going to be a 19-year draw. Two away, we'll put them on.
We're paying by the inch, or? Stack them up.
Okay, so, oh, here we go, here's the, uh...
Yeah, this was the committee, so I...
This was the committee who brought this up. Okay, perfect, so we can, uh, follow with the respective chairs and get those...
I got my list.
Get the list.
I have to do this.
It's 6:30, so now what do we got to do?
My play poker. I move that we adjourn. I'll second that.
Discussion. Boma.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Terrio.
Aye.
Willie.
Oh, aye.
I could say no, but I'll...
No.
Meeting adjourned, thank you everyone.
I got something for... You know what matters.
Yeah, we know what matters, I could, I could...
I got something.
Shut these off.